We're all set. Thank you very much.
Andrew. It's that first school day after the vacation.
All right, it is six o'clock. You want to call the meeting's order? First up?
Yes, my allegiance. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, which stands one nation, under one accord, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, and February tenth of twenty twenty five. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Steve. Do we have a second? Quit. I think Earl was first.
How good.
Any discussion, corrections, other than hearing none? All in favor of approving the minutes of January twenty seventh and February tenth? It is unanimous. Next up is approving the role of accounts dated February sixth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-one cents, and dated February twentieth, twenty twenty five, in the amount of ninety-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars and seven cents. Do we have a motion? That's okay. Motion by Earl. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor of approving those roles as presented. It is unanimous. Um, do we have any committee reports? Okay. Um, administrative reports. Do we want to move up the out-of-state trip request first then? Yeah?
Do we need a motion for that, or?
Uh, I think if there is, none of the board is opposed, we can just move it up in the agenda.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense to me. Okay, all right. So what we'll do is for new business, we'll move up the requests. Uh, we have two. We have requests for cheerleaders to attend the New England wins, and then we have wrestlers, so.
All right, so Amy texted Eric to tell us when we'd be here, and that's because Jim doesn't have a phone, so. So I'm gonna do the request for the cheerleaders, and Dustin and our wrestling coach will do for them. The cheerleaders are asking for permission to go to Worcester State University on March twenty-second to compete in the New England cheering championship, which they qualified for. Uh, they would carpool, as the parents would carpool, we'll have licenses and insurance, proof of insurance for each driver going, like we did last year, and we'll get, assuming he calls a non-parent guy, we'll give him a note, give him that parent permission to bring him. The boosters are paying for hotel rooms for the team there on the night before. So we did this last year.
This is exactly what happened last year.
Yeah, that's exactly what we did last year.
And have you provided document, a form and everything we were supposed to have for that?
In the past, we just compiled everything and had it on record for liability reasons, like who gave permission to drive and stuff like that. Do I, is there something I need to fill out?
We had a form for that.
I can fill it out tomorrow.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep. So... Yes, we did do this last year. So, um...
And they're going down the night before but coming back that?
Yep.
That's my understanding.
Yep.
Just one night.
That's my understanding. It's only one, I'll let you know. But it was, mine, it was the twenty-first, the night before, because it's just too much to do every morning.
Yeah. And as you said, you're vetting the drivers and doing all that.
That's what we did last time. We asked, well, we're driving down with an aunt, we gave us a note with consent, and we asked if parents would bring in other kids, give us public insurance license. Somebody was just driving on a child, and that's for you.
Sure.
Right.
Yes. Okay. Are there any other discussions?
Should we, go ahead. Should we have a motion?
Well, that's, I guess we'd be next.
What do we want, just throw the wrestling one in and do both at the same time?
Well, this is a separate, separate.
Separate thing.
Separate one. Make a motion that we accept the, uh, the cheerleaders to attend New England with the stipulations stated.
Second.
Motion second to approve the request. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the request for the cheerleaders?
And I will do the paperwork tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. Next up, we got basically the same thing for wrestlers.
So we're heading down, uh, eighth and ninth of March to Rhode Island, Providence. Two wrestlers, one, uh, I'm gonna actually, it's my son. And then the other one is, uh, Kayla Jarrow. She's, her parents are taking her. So it's probably day seven to the eighth.
Only with Providence, so.
After the patching.
Where are they, are they having it at the high school, or?
No, they're having it at the...
I don't remember.
Well, no, it's...
Is it that thing?
It'd be quite awesome. It's a convention center, it's, uh...
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's right there. I know, I know where we're at. All right, well, anyway.
So it's parents basically transporting their own kids?
Yeah.
Students?
Yeah, that'd be a nice facility for that.
Yeah.
So, well, all right. Um, so that simplifies it quite a lot, transporting your own kids, so. Any questions on it? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept as presented.
All right.
Second.
We have a second. Karen Beech on this one. Uh, okay, there's nothing else. All in favor of approving wrestlers, two wrestlers attending New England?
Yeah.
It is unanimous.
Good for them.
Very good. Good luck to everybody that's participating. Good luck. So I know the sit, Coach, I know the situation with wrestlers is how they place, is it, was it first places state titles that qualified wrestlers?
Uh, individual, it's sort of, in there's, for the females, there was just one girl state, and the boys is all states, they have to walk by top three.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because we do a, you know, state championship thing too, I don't know.
Yeah, it was top three, so.
Okay. Great.
Dustin will tell you this, because, well, his son won the regional championship as a freshman. He won as a weight class in seconds in the states. So he's one of the young men who's going into a great season.
Nice. All right, no pressure. Three more years. All right, sounds good. Thank you very much, Coach. You can hang around longer if you want, but don't feel you need to.
Give him, yeah, it's like, okay, I'm done.
That's why we moved it up.
All right, um, administrative reports. Our elementary school, go first.
Good evening. I will keep this brief, even though we have a lot on the agenda tonight, but just to give you, um, a few upcoming dates, um, in March, which is only, it's silly to say, but March twelfth, we have our grade one concert. Um, March twenty-sixth is our grade two concert, um, and we also have parent-teacher conferences scheduled for March seventeenth and nineteenth. So those are a few events. The other thing I wanted to touch base on is today we had our faculty leadership team, and the focus of this meeting was our winter data. Um, and we had asked all of our team leaders to have discussions with their teams about things like what are some successes they saw, um, when we had completed our winter data, what were some things they might have noticed or wondered about, and what were their next steps for, um, the second half of the year. And so today, when we met as F L T, they were able to share that information as a group. Um, and the general feeling was that everybody was super proud of the growth that students had made, um, and it felt as though students were taking ownership of not only their learning, but the work that they were doing on the assessments. Um, and we've been working as a school on that, so it was good when we all got together that we heard, um, that and we were able to see that in the data that we had. So I just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, last Friday, the fourteenth, we had our remarkable raider assembly to celebrate student success in academics and citizenship. I'd like to read the following names just to celebrate. Uh, Ashley McDermott, Kaylee Casares, Allison Door, Aiden Haber, Cameron Akoa, Tammy Marcelina, Zach Burnham, Aurora Phillips, Trinity Pelletier, Holly Leclaire, Avery Marshall, Autumn Bayou, James Poole, Bradley Poole, Azariah Rodriguez, Jackson Powell, Isaac Bulger, Maddox Lambert, Emma Dameron, Ella Vidjuk, and Cam Overlock. Just a remarkable assembly on a Friday afternoon before vacation. It was fantastic. Uh, on March eleventh, upcoming dates, we have our Career Cafe. Our next focus will be business and education. So if anyone's interested, if you are in either area, uh, please come see me. We're looking for a guest panels. Uh, it's gonna run from eight-thirty to ten, and I do think we have a special guest that, that morning potentially. Um, so that's March eleventh. Uh, March fourteenth, we have our next junior high dance. Again, always looking for chaperones. Um, and my last piece, um, we have an author coming on March nineteenth that we've solidified. I spoke about an author, um, many years in my principal tenure, tenure, uh, but Craig Grossi, he's a former Marine, um, will be coming to join our student body on Wednesday, the nineteenth. Uh, the story is about him smuggling a dog from Afghanistan. Uh, the dog is no longer with him, but it's, I guess, quite an inspiring story for our students, not only about the process of writing, um, but just to keep, keep going forward. So, uh, thank you to Ms. E. Lisa Erickson, uh, for making that happen. I'll get that information out to everybody if you're interested in coming to one of the assemblies, um, to see him speak. I think it's gonna be really good for our students.
What's the, um, topic for the Career Cafe again?
Uh, business and education, and one of them is at eight-thirty. I believe that's the education. And then the ten o'clock is going to be, uh, business. And we've reached out to several people, and it's, everyone's schedules are interesting, so we're, we're still working on it. So, um, a few of your names have come up, either the business sector or the education sector. So if you're interested, yeah, Ms. Erickson, we could reach out to Kate or myself.
Could you email, I'm a commercial lender, so I'd...
Absolutely. Um, and for the record, so the students actually sign up, so it's not the entire eighth grade. Uh, I think we have a hundred and one students. Um, it's the ones that are just really geared and interested in this, um, in those fields right now. So, yeah, we're excited, so. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Just to add to that assembly, we actually had one of our high school students who runs his own side business, gonna be a speaker about, you know, being a high school kid and getting all that going and so on. So I think it'd be good for them to see, you know, a real live person at that counter every day, you know, talking about what it took to get his business going. Anyway, uh, high school report for student recognition. There's a lot of students to recognize, and a little more information after, so here we go. Uh, before the break, we had our Student of the Month Assembly for the month of February, and to be recognized for freshman was Frank Arnnam, sophomore was Davy Kimball, junior Lily Stafford, and senior was Max Spicer, all certainly deserving of the award. Um, on January thirtieth, he texts in, I had the local skills competition, and I know it's in your packets, you can see the award winners in there, but I still think it's, you know, important to recognize them in public as well, so people watching or here can hear their names. Um, so I'll just go through that list. In baking and pastry arts, Sarah Dixon, got silver. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Wow.
And Kennedy Humon, got bronze. Cabinet making, Sephar Gold, Zach Stewart Silver, Liam and Pearson Bronze, so we took that whole catalog. Carpentry, Sarah Shaw Silver. Culinary arts, Jamie and Roja Bronze. Digital photography, Connor Mahoney Gold. Early childhood education, Cro-McQuarrie Gold, and Jacqueline Susie Bronze. Employment process, Kalen Bolia Gold. Job interview, Jennifer Jack Gold. Job skill demonstration, Jackson Stedge Gold, and Harley Raymond Bronze. Mobile robotics, Reese Thompson and Sam Vigyu both got gold. Outdoor leadership, Megan Mahoney Bronze. Urban search and rescue, Ethan Tyler Silver. In video production, Sean Susie also got silver. So quite a lengthy list for Winslow High School to be recognized.
Sounds awesome.
Yeah, probably those students. And this week? Just like, I mean, we're the smallest sending school. Yeah. To that, so. Yeah. And I did notice, like, you see on that list, there are, like, Temple and, you know, Means also sent students as well. So there are even more, you know, schools, but we still have a large percentage of, you know, those students being recognized. Pretty awesome. Uh, this week is our second week of Winter Carnival. The week prior to vacation, we had our outdoor activities after school, variety of different games and whatnot for students to sign up and participate in. Uh, this week, we are doing the indoor activities after school. Those started today. Um, and then on Friday, there'll be an all-day activity, kind of to wrap up the Winter Carnival thing, which is a pretty big deal for the kids here at school. They really, really appreciate having that opportunity. Uh, Friday night, we will have a dance from two-eleven, so make sure you rest it up. I'm sure we'll see you all there. And that'll wrap up our Winter Carnival and hopefully continue to have a great spring. Any other questions? Yeah?
And the unified basketball and cheer has been going on.
Unified basketball, yeah. Both basketball and cheering has been good. They've had, evidently, two home games so far.
Yeah.
Um, it's been really well attended.
Yeah.
Battle of the Bridge tomorrow.
Battle of the Bridge tomorrow at Waterville, and I believe it's the fourteenth, the fourteenth staff and, uh, student game here.
Saw that email.
Which is usually pretty good.
Yeah.
Get some people out of retirement to go try to run up the down floor a little bit.
And that one, you're all definitely invited to play if you want to.
Much more fun to watch you run up and down.
Trip over my feet. Um, I wanted to use my time tonight just to update you on a few different partnerships that we started this year. Uh, we have partnerships with the Alfon You Center, Maine General, and K B H. Uh, the Maine General staff have worked on some lower-level first-time vape offender programs with our students. Uh, the program meets once per week and lasts for approximately four sessions. And that, if you remember, I have mentioned this before, allows us not only to reduce suspension, but to try to get some resources in the students' and families' hands, um, that maybe will help them not become addicted to vaping. Um, we utilize a diversion program at Alfon You Center that connects students to mentors and positive programming. Uh, this can be utilized to reduce suspensions for a variety of things. Um, and again, it gives place, uh, students a place to go after school. They can even spend time there if they're being suspended, um, and do some programming, do some homework help, and it kind of just gets them off the street, gets them out of the house from, you know, sitting there doing nothing and enjoying The Price is Right or whatever might be on TV. Um, police can also utilize this program as an effort to keep kids out of the juvenile detention program. So it's like those first-time offenders where, you know, a lot of times, to be honest with you, the courts don't even, they'll, they'll ship the case out before anything even happens. So you're not even just getting a slap on the wrist, like there's nothing put into place. There's no consequences, if you will. Um, I want to share a story, and I tried to make it as bland as possible, so I'm not telling you who the student is, okay? But we had a student got caught with a vape pen early on in his school year that had a marijuana cartridge in it. Uh, we worked with Officer Stewart to get him into that diversion program at the Alfon You Center. It did reduce his suspension for a few days, so it got him back into school quicker. But more important than that, he was told that as long as he completed the program, he, his case wouldn't go to the D E A, and between all of us in the room and those watching at home, it probably wouldn't have gotten very far in that system anyway. I'm very happy to report that a few weeks ago, we met with the student. So part of his return, like completing the program, was, and this is six months later, five months later, he had to meet with administration, Officer Stewart, the program director from the You Center. Um, the guy's name is Langston Ware, who was phenomenal. I, I can't speak highly enough for just this one interaction I had with him. And he had to sit there and talk to us about, you know, what did he learn? What were his goals moving forward? This student said, you know, I, I've made a lot of bad choices, and I wasn't going, these are his words, I'm not, I wasn't going down a very good path, but I got into this program. I learned that I really like lifting weights. I like working out. I like training for M M A, which is one of the things that they're working on over there. He goes, I, I now have goals. I want to be a mentor in this program. I want, I'm sitting there, my jaw just about hit the table. I'm like, that's why we do what we do. We find these things to support these kids, and there's great partners out there. Um, I wish I could share more specifics about other programs, like things that are going on with the K B H counselor, but obviously that would violate students' and families' confidentiality. Um, but what I can say is while I cannot know those specifics of those conversations with families and kids, what I do know about the referrals and the kids that are being worked on with the K B H counselor and those families, you're talking about some of our most at-risk kids. You're talking about some kids who are in danger of dropping out. You're talking, more importantly, mental health crises that are being averted by working with these kids, substance abuse, et cetera. Um, if I looked at, how do I know that program is working? I look at the waiting list. I look at how many kids still need that service because she's booked up and she can't work with those kids, right? So that's one way of knowing, and just knowing the stories. Again, I can't talk about those specific stories, but knowing how this is potentially working with kids and families is, we are so lucky to have programs like this. Uh, the last thing I want to tell you about is just an email that I sent out to all parents, um, back before vacation. Uh, on February eleventh, we had a guy come here and speak to our kids through the Choices Matter program. Uh, the guy's name is Steve Emt, E M T is his last name, and Emt is how you say it. Um, he talked with the, the student body about the importance of making good choices, especially behind the wheel of a vehicle. He used his own life story in talking with the kids. He went to West Point, had his father pass away, hit some pretty tough times in his life, dropped out of West Point, decided to go to UConn, uh, where he was noticed playing pickup basketball because he's a big dude. He's, you know, think of Peter, except for maybe a little bit bigger, right? He's a big guy. You, the UConn basketball coaches noticed him and said, hey, why don't you come play basketball at UConn? UConn's no slouch of a basketball school, I don't know if anyone knows anything about that. So he, he walked on at UConn, he played, graduated from UConn, made some bad choices. Yep. Really drunk one night, got behind the wheel of a vehicle, got in an accident, and is left and paralyzed for the rest of his life. So he talks about his journey going through this. He had, he spoke for well over an hour, and you could hear a pin drop in the gym the entire time he spoke. When it came time for them to, the students to ask questions, they asked great questions. They kept him there for another twenty minutes or so, to the point where it was like, okay, they need to get him to his next appointment, like we need to stop. But he would not leave there until he talked, he talked to everybody. I think he might have been late for his next appointment, but I figure that's on him. Um, where he ended up going in his life, he's now a para-Olympic athlete. He's a world-class, uh, curler, and he does that from his wheelchair. And so being able to share that to the students, and I think the bigger impact that is what came afterwards. I got a few messages from some parents who said, my kid came home talking about what happened at school today, talking about the assembly. Um, students at lunchtime talking about, hey, so what did you take away from that assembly? Like, kids, it, it made an impact. It was fantastic. I've talked with the group about, you know, how do we make this a yearly thing? How, because they have a whole bunch of other speakers that come, similar life stories. Some maybe, you know, there was one guy that we almost had who, um, was a Division One football player, and after his freshman year, he got hit by somebody texting and driving and paralyzed him. And so he talks about his story from that aspect. Uh, we had somebody several years ago who killed somebody drinking and driving. And so he talks about being behind bars, and the last time that he was with this, he had a conversation with his parents while they were alive, he was behind bars, and how that has kind of put him on his path. So, great organization, even better is the cost. It costs absolutely nothing. It's sponsored by the Maine Department of, uh, Highway Safety or Bureau of Highway Safety or whatever they're called. Um, the M P A also helps sponsor that, so, uh, great organization. Um, and I do want to end with, as he was leaving, now he speaks to high schools all over the country. He made several comments about our students, how respectful they were, and he had shared with me some other stories of other schools where they weren't so respectful, and he just, he wanted, he said it to me several times as he was leaving. So, um, I say it all the time, but we have great kids. We're very fortunate.
Yeah, Bella came home talking about it, and he shook, I think, everybody's hand. Anybody that wanted to talk to him, like that one-on-one after, he took the time.
Yeah, he wasn't leaving until, and he had a pretty big appointment next. Uh, I won't say where he was going, but it was, uh, some people really need to hear that message.
And he really connected.
I'm here.
Yeah, and great speaker, that's, that he was just...
And they, they also had like an A I thing set up, um, with goggles and everything to kind of show people what being impaired looks like and being behind the wheel, and simulators and things. And they came back for the unified game that night.
Yes.
So when they found out we had a big event going on, they're like, well, well, when we're done with this school, we could just come back. Like, if you want to, we can have you set up in the, in the hallway. So, yeah, they were really appreciative.
Yeah, he was very...
Good stuff.
Yeah. Good stuff. Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Uh, what do we got next? We have Michelle.
I'd share a lot with her last week.
And it was all good stuff. Still thinking about that.
And you have mine presented later, so.
Okay. So we're all good. All right. I guess we got Jim.
Yeah.
We're already trying to get back to his thing, but.
You know, often as an athletic director, you get phone calls about sportsmanship, how it's lacking and stuff. And I think we're great students, but I think at times, kids be kids. Well, this weekend, we got recognized for three sportsmanship awards. Uh, our girls and boys co-op team of wobble swimming on the, on each individual's sportsmanship award, and our girls indoor track team on their, their, uh, sportsmanship award. And you can say, whoop-de-doo, but this is voted on by your peers. Other teams vote on you. That's how you get this, is by your peers. And they have three teams each season win it, says a lot about our kids. So when people call me and say, oh, your fans weren't good, hearing this is, it's very nice to hear that. Our kids are respectful, so.
Can I just add one more thing to that, which Jim's not gonna mention this? Uh, a lot goes into sportsmanship award voting, right? Especially when it comes to basketball and tournament and whatever. He got the results of our boys', um, results up in Bangor, and they got a perfect forty-five out of forty-five, and that takes into account a lot of different things. So, um, so they, good sportsmanship, and it's, this guy's a...
I wish I had a thing to, but no, a lot of good things are happening. Again, we only hear about it when things go bad, but they go, yeah.
Could you give an update on the boys hockey? I just had people asking me about.
Yeah, boys hockey is, as I told you last time, we're gonna be with Gardner and Waterville Lawrence for at least another year, and it's potentially even longer, but he did assure us it would go a year, and he would give us notice if he was gonna look to elsewhere. That's what you heard, right?
Correct. So we would, it would be a conversation with all the hockey communities if there was anything different other than...
But he's assured Chad and I, he's assured Chad and I that we'll with him next year.
So who are the teams again?
Uh, Waterville, Winslow, Lawrence, uh, Waterville, Winslow, Lawrence, Gardner. We'll stay together, and that's who we're with right now.
Okay.
So we've been assured.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you.
Let somebody's mind to rest.
All right.
It's all right, mind to rest.
Yeah.
For the most part, on the facilities, and it's been quiet except for today, we had a, we found a small leak on a water heater. Um, so we're working on addressing that, seeing what options we have, and go make a repair or replace and all that, just for the new junior high.
I was gonna say, it's not our...
No, it's for the new junior high, so we found that today, so we're gonna be addressing that and seeing what options we have and what route we have to go with. And that's been quiet, and snow, we haven't got much snow yet. Knock on wood.
Yeah, we're okay with that. Please have. Uh, any questions? All right, sounds good.
All right, sounds good. All right. I guess that's all our new speakers on that front. Amanda.
All right. Sixty-four point one percent of the fiscal year has passed and sixty-three point oh nine percent of the budget has been spent. Just today, we received invoices for the second half of the interest payments for the bonds. It was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So that'll bring that variance all closer together, but we have a little lilibum, so, all good.
Those are twice a year?
The interest is, the principal was all paid in the fall.
That's good. Long as Cory doesn't mess it up.
No pressure.
That stuff should be under warranty. Are you serious?
Of course.
I'll read, look into it.
Now that works.
We're one in five years, three months.
Something like that, yeah. All right, so next up is Mr. Pipitone.
I'm really glad that Mr. Bell went to the podium and mentioned something about Mr. Burgoyne and his work in the athletic area, because it does take a team, it does take a village, and it does take an entire school community and community in order for students to receive such awards. That is an outstanding award to receive and it is a super shining light on this community and our students and our parents and what we, everyone does collectively for this district. Briefly, I just want to transfer Libby Stevens. She's a Winslow Elementary School pre-K ed tech two to Winslow Elementary School as a general ed tech two. It's one transfer. The other trans, and these are, these are voluntary transfers, by the way. These were requests with positions that were, became available. Alyssa Farrell, Winslow Elementary School, resource room ed tech two to Winslow Elementary School pre-K ed tech two. The only other thing that I have under my report is that the next policy meeting will be held on March fourth.
Yeah, good. All right, any questions for Peter? Okay. All right, next up is public comment. I know I've read the introduction a bunch of times. Do we have anybody in the public who has not heard it? Is everybody in the public heard it? Okay. Yes. I can do it again.
No.
No, okay, all right. Nobody's going to feel bad about it, all right. All right, so everybody that is here has heard it. For those online, it is an introduction that gives everybody an idea of how public comment works, what it is and what it isn't. That is on our website and if you'd like to reach out to us anytime, feel free to email at any time. You do not have to attend a meeting to tell us your concerns. So given that, do we have anything for public comment? Okay, hearing none, I will consider public comment closed. And old business, we don't have any old business? Computers? So new business, we already took care of the children and wrestlers, so copier and printer bids?
Yep, so Will Beckman was going to do this, but he is unable to be with us this evening because Waddle has a board meeting as well. And Will's services are needed in Waddle to make sure everything goes smoothly as Jason is doing for us in the room across the hall. So briefly, Vassaburo, Waddle and Winslow bid together for a five-year copier-printer contract that covers toner and other supplies, maintenance and leases on the equipment. The current five-year contract with Transco Xerox ends this summer. So we need to go out to bid. The committee consisted of building principals, office staff, members of the technology team. They received five bids. After looking at the different criteria such as cost, capabilities of the company references and proposed equipment, the committee has voted to recommend to the school board that we accept the bid from Kyocera. And I may have not, may not pronounce that correctly, but that's who it is, K Y O C E R A. Yes, sir. The lease costs will be a bit more, although that is mostly due to having to replace more equipment than last time. But the per-click charges, the cost per page that are printed is much less. So we calculate a small savings going this route. They don't really have a history with this company, but along with their references, they received positive reviews from other schools that use them, including Kobe College. So, that's their recommendation for you.
Can you make sense of things like they've done in due diligence? Earl was thinking.
I'm just, the per-click. So every copy, every time a copy is made, we are charged the cost per print from every single copy. Yes, you get a charge for that. You get a charge for that, plus the toner that's used that you have to replace. And with toner, it gets recycled. And does that come off of the bill, that recycling charge? Or does that just go back to them and they take care of that?
I couldn't tell you that, but I bet Jason Brusani could.
A click includes everything except the paper. So toner, we do not get charged for. Toner is part of the click charge, as well as all of the service on the device. So paper is extra.
Yeah.
And, but a click is also an impression, an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven impression. So if it's double-sided, you pay for the paper once, but you get two clicks. Tabloid size is two clicks.
What about a, like, email to your, a fact, not copy to email?
Oh, if you're scanning the email, no, that's not a click. It has to be coming out of the device.
Okay, so electronic is now.
Right, correct. Yeah, you can scan as much as you want back, email.
Is there some kind of a ballpoint ballpark figure for a click?
Like what it typically costs?
Yeah.
My information is dated, but when I worked for Xerox, we used to argue that if you had an inkjet printer at home, you were probably paying twenty-five cents a click. For an inkjet printer. It'd probably come down a little bit, but ink was always extremely expensive to print. And toner at fractions of a penny usually, or might be as high as two, but it's all, all of that part is included.
The more you print, the more it costs you.
The more pages that come out, yes.
So, all right.
Good?
Thank you, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Do you need a motion to accept that?
I believe we do.
Move to accept the recommendation.
I'll second that. We have a second from Steve. Any further questions during discussion? All in favor of approving the printer bid as presented? All right.
I'll shoot.
All right. All right, next up is the first read of policy E I insurance program risk management and the accompanying procedures of E I dash R, earned work procedures.
E I is a, is a new policy to us. This is not something that we had in place, however, we pretty much practice. Our procedure was what this policy lays out for us. It's always a good idea to have a policy that would guide you so that you can always come back and say, this is why we do what we do. And this particular policy is pretty much what we did. If you look at the rules on this particular policy and the procedures that you go through on these rules, again, it's what we have used in the past in this district. And it is, again, this would help us when we talk with folks about our policies and our procedures and how this works and so that we're consistent with how we apply these particular measures. It would be very helpful for us to have this as guidance.
And this is just the first reading of this?
Just the first read, yes.
So, well, I guess I'll take a motion before we get into discussion, I guess, to do this properly, I guess. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right, so discussion. I can tell you I became aware of this actually at an M S B A meeting and some of the information I had received. So it's like, hmm, that kind of makes sense. Do we have that? And sure enough, we don't. So, we were doing it, but it's, but I have policies. The policy three was in favor, obviously, because it's here. A second. All right. That's right, we didn't have a second.
Steven and Earl. Steve Earl.
Any other discussion? Very good. Having dealt with these sort of things in my workplace, I'm quite familiar with the process. All right, hearing nothing else, all in favor of approving the first read of policy E I and the associated procedures, E I dash R. Next up, reaffirmation of policy E E A student transportation services.
The policy committee meant to discuss this one as well. There are no major changes in this particular policy except to include superintendent or their designee as opposed to just simply stating the transportation director, who's the person that's ultimately responsible for these things, because it's not fair to put that person in that position. As a superintendent, I would obviously turn to the transportation director for the advice. But I think the transportation director also needs to have some support so that the director knows that they're not out there alone on these decisions. The other piece that was added under health, it says required by their I E P or a five or four plan, that was not there, so we added that. And the last part about that, it's just language that may not, may be dated. When we look under C, there was a sentence there that said, students will be transported at the end of the school day to the location where they boarded the bus in the morning. That is not always the case with our students. Sometimes they may leave from one house and they get dropped off in another house in the afternoon. So we are aware of where they're going. They need permission to do so. We have, you know, we have slips, the schools, the elementary school. Everybody knows where the kids are going, but it's, it's, it's not always the same location.
Policy was very definitive, which actually.
Very constructive.
Yeah. And again, this is another one that comes to you unanimously, ought to go forward by the policy committee.
So, and again, this is basically what we're doing anyway. So, well, we have a motion to approve policy E E A.
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a second. Any discussions or questions? It's reasonably straightforward. All right. Well then, without any further ado, all in favor of approving the reaffirmation of policy E E A? Any two of us? All right. All right, now we get to fun stuff, budgets. So, first up is the special education budget.
I do have one question before we start that. With those transfers, does that mean that there is now an opening for the R R room?
Very interesting. Tonight is going to be a nomination proposition.
Got it.
We waited.
Got it.
So, all right, and now before Christine gets started, just want to mention for the public, we will entertain questions from the public, you know, that we can give a quick answer to. But I would ask that any questions are withheld until the end of the presentation and then the board will ask their questions and then the public can ask some of the answers. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Christine Schmidt, Special Education Director for the Winslow School Department. And I will be presenting our proposed special education budget for the point five point six school year. Before I get into all of the lines, I just thought I'd start a little background about developing a special education budget. We do the very best we can to make predictions. We look at a three-year history that as most of you are aware, special education budget is very complex due to multiple variables, variables that can change over a school year. We're bound by federal and state mandates, which are I D E A is the federal and user is means unified special education regulations, which require public schools to provide students with disabilities at no reference to cost, an appropriate and equitable education in the least restrictive environment. A lot of us experience some of those variables during the school year, which can impact our lines. There are changing needs in programs throughout the districts. And some of our programs include autism program, life skills and behavior day treatment that could require additional staff, equipment or contracted services at any point in the school year. We have grade levels that have higher numbers of students with I E Ps from year to year. So we have to move staff from year to year. We may have higher numbers of incoming kindergartners through C D S that have significant disabilities or even referrals and necessary evaluations that may not be done until they start with us in the school year that could impact the budget line. We have students that move into or out of the district throughout the year that have various needs that require changes. We have hospitalizations, we have tutoring, we have assessments and we have other staff support needs throughout the school year. And then we could also be faced with high cost out-of-district placements throughout the school year. So I just, just wanted to give some of that background. And now I can start with, we have heard a lot about U S I basketball and cheering. And recently, W A B I did a news report. It's about two minutes long. I was only able to provide sort of the screenshot, but we can put the link to the minutes. And I would really encourage you to go and take a look at that and really highlights sort of the theme. You know, when I came here collaborating with my other administrators, it's really our successes, our community and independence that a lot of our students with disabilities have K to twelve. And I just wanted to include that as one of the highlights of that. Some of our other successes here, we have student mentors, which has been incredible. Some of our members of civil rights or other higher achieving students are mentors to some of our special education students. So they work on them with math, reading and writing. And it's just really nice for our students to have peer mentors. Some of our students also participated in the early acceptance college day. We have many students who are going to community college and other vocational programs. One area of focus we're having as part of secondary students at their transition plans is they are participating in their own I E P meetings. So they're coming prepared with what they're. So they're coming prepared with what their goals are after school. We have many, many classroom citizens, students of the month that are students with individual education plans. We have many students that participate in our mid main technical center and have won awards. We have many twice exceptional students, so not only are they students with individual education funds, but they're also students who are, who are gifted and talented as well. Music, jazz band, art course, and also some of our academic clubs. And then we have students who are participating in recycling, school store, job shadowing. And we're really working on apprenticeships in businesses. I don't know if everyone is aware, but with change in legislation, we have many students who can remain in public education until the age of 22 now. And we're really looking at that, making that very meaningful. Not sitting in class, you know, taking art again or P E again, but really getting them out and doing things that are productive to make them independent as they move out of our school. And we have academic successes. Thank you, Michelle, for all your technical assistance and sharing your information. But you can see through our scores on our main through year how, and this is just comparing our Winslow Special Education Identified Students with state special education identified students. And we're performing at or above, above grade level in both math and reading. When we look at who our students are, I've included all of the eligibility categories for special education. And here are our students divided up. We are right now, we're still holding steady at 27% identification. And we are at 317. We have had 28 referrals so far this year. Eight of those students have qualified. And most of the other students, again, are participating in all of the interventions and supports. We, you know, special education is sort of that very top, top tier. And there are other layers of interventions throughout the district. So even if a student isn't qualified, they're still getting other supports and services that are offered K to 12 here in Winslow. I just wanted to highlight some of our goals for those continued successes. At the very top is maintaining federal and state compliance with IDEA and user. It would be lovely if we could give individual education plans to every single student, but in remaining fiscally, fiscally responsible, we really have to go back to those federal and state regulations. We are working on collaboration on district-wide initiatives, K to 12, G D I, all of those things I mentioned earlier. Working on sustainability, efficiency, and prioritizing our supports and services. And then sharing resources across the district is really part of that sustainability. Working on curriculum alignment, special education curriculum with our general education. Our continuum of services through general education interventions. Our referral process, working as resources for those teams. Technology, assistive technology and apps. Rather than purchasing new software or looking at new devices, I'm really working with technology. I'll email them first. Do we already have that? Is that embedded in our one-to-one devices already before we move on and purchase? We're a part of our attendance teams throughout the district. Often if our students aren't showing up, I receive copies of any letters that are sent home so that we could look at, you know, are we maybe missing a disability? Are there reasons those students aren't attending? Are there other supports and services that we could provide? And then again, a continuation of community resources and outreach, working with K P H, working with the Office of Disability and Aging as part of our transition planning. And then building our professional development for all staff. Our most important resources, I've included here a breakdown of the elementary school, Virginia High, the high school, and the amount of staff we have in each one of those buildings. All right. Now, there's 20 pages of budget. I really tried to highlight just those lines that impacted the goals. Any federal mandates, anything that we really had to support through the budget. But if there is anything that does stand out that you have questions on, you can ask. Starting at the elementary school, you will see some of changes in line one, the salary for the teacher. And that was, as I explained, with student needs. There was a half-time teacher that was moved to the high school for increased needs. There was a decrease in the salary line on the ed tech one. That person did complete some coursework and they were able to move to ed tech two. There was a decrease in the WHITSUB line for ed techs. And that is because those positions are, we don't need the sub as much anymore. The teacher tuition line, a slight increase there, contractual, there are individual requests for courses, ed techs. Many of those ed techs have, too, will complete their program. We will have certified teachers working as educational technicians. So that's why you see a decrease in those lines. Staff development here at the elementary school, I've had some requests for professional development specifically around dyslexia. And looking at some of our student evaluations who have specific learning disability, an area of great weakness is in phonological processing. So I've increased that line a little bit to add a little more professional development at the elementary level, phonological processing. Thirty-four tech software, there's a slight decrease there. Because a lot of our devices have built-in assistive technology. You don't need to purchase programs. Self-contained line, line forty, there was a decrease. Fill those ed techs. Oh, sorry, sorry.
I do have a quick, what is a phonological process?
Oh, great question. That's, I'm very sorry. I should have explained that. So that phonological processing is the ability to break down letters and sounds and put them together to make words. So many students might, might remember like to spell the word stop. I have S T P in it. But to really be able to retrieve and think of it as S T O P. So that's, that's a processing. It's not a spelling. It's not, it's really about processing those letters and sounds to be able to remember and go the correct order. And it really impacts that early reading, early writing.
And is that something that's found with dyslexia or those two things that are kind of, you're talking about systematic processing?
The question, why is it that children always write numbers backwards?
I think that's developmental.
Do we write our numbers the wrong way or something? Maybe they have the right one.
It, it is the way they're remembering it and it takes practice for them. But the nines are backwards, fours are backwards, sixes are backwards. Yeah, yeah, that's just that, that visual memory retrieval. They know, oh, I think I know how to do it, but bringing it up the right way. And then you'll see an increase in the social worker line because that social worker came up sixth grade at the elementary school. And then you will see an increase in the speech testing line. And that is because that should be a one-time increase for a good long time. But they updated the C TOP standardized assessment and we can't give them the reason. Winslow Junior High. Big changes here, line one fifty, one fifty-one. There were no course requests. Self-contained line, you'll see an increase for the psychender teacher this year just potentially due to contractual psychender around. Physical therapy, again, is that due to the shifting needs? IEP service went to a different grade level. So you will see an increase here, decrease elementary. And to the high school, half-time. Wages for an ed tech two decreased. The, the number of ed techs throughout the district has not changed. That bottom line has not changed. It's just a position change due to increased need. Your teacher tuition line is a decrease. There are no requests for courses. And then in the self-contained program at the high school, the ed tech one position was a decrease. That person took courses and is now in ed tech two. Line three twenty under speech pathology. This was an assistive technology evaluation that was done for students that speaks with a device. That is decreased because that evaluation will not be used again for another few years. And then this tuition to public sources, that was a $4,000. I reviewed the history and it has, it's something that hasn't been used for several years and was taken out. And that will be shifted to that $100,000 tuition project. That, those are what we call out of district. Persons of such significant need that we cannot service them in our D E C. So this is an actual photo. This is our school store at the high school. All of the products are made by our students. They are working on their math skills. They're working on their money skills. They sell these students, they sell these products. So they're working on social communication and marketing through this one. So I made sure I got a picture. Any questions?
Not a budget question, but how, what's the, what's the level of communication between the state DOE and like yourself in terms of potentials? In terms of reduction of services, a reduction of financial support? Like this lawsuit going on, the Texas versus LaSara, which would look at the five or four plan. Has there been any discussion as far as how at the state level that could be supplemented or could be addressed?
Not yet. Typically, Trauma and Woodson will review all of those things as that applied to case law for special education here in our state. And that's, usually we won't get any communication until that guidance is put out.
Okay.
And then, you know, there's, we have, we have monthly online meetings with Aaron Fraser, who's our state director. And then each regional director meets. So there's, there's a lot of ongoing.
Now I would just point out that year over year, there's an increase for this budget of about $90,000 for the year. And it's mostly, it's wages and insurance. That's the story for all of this. It's people, the people that serve these children. That's what it, so I just feel like that's worth pointing out. That's where there's nothing that makes up that $90,000 if anything other than people.
Insurance.
Right.
All the contractual stuff that's out there.
And it's kind of, yeah, it's not like one new position or it's just the shifting and, and yeah, just that's worth pointing that out. And the need is there. And there's the spectrum of need for the kids that require these human beings to be there for them. It's, they're all, you have, all of these kids have needs, but they're just on a, on different spectrums. They are, it's important to work, so.
It is gratifying and important.
And we're legally required to do it, not that we wouldn't do what's right.
Right.
Anyway, but we do have a legal requirement to provide these services. And I guess, you know, the whole, the total as a whole hasn't changed that much, less than the rate of inflation, which is great. But just for the public out, you know, Christine touched on it. I mean, but in short, I would say, you know, it's hard for virtually anybody other than Christine who lives and breathes with this sort of thing to follow where all that, there's so many cost centers where things went up and things went down or whatever. There's so much movement within, and this is what it is when you did it. It's probably changed since you've done this, I'm guessing, or it might change tomorrow. The point is, it's a moving target that's forever moving. With the needs, as you expressed, you could have a student show up tomorrow that has, has needs that have to be met. And
And that this is a reflection of, oh, all these kids are out of control. And that is not what this is. It's learning disabilities. It's, it's, it's
Physical disabilities.
Yes, physical disabilities, just even, I think of my son, just very minor behavioral stuff that without the support would turn into something else, but it's minor, but that, it's needed.
But it could be a child moving in that needs some sort of physical, a hearing device.
Right.
That's the need that that kiddo needs and it has to be purchased because you gotta do it. So, yeah, you never know.
It's correct. So many things.
I think the behavior piece of it is the least, I think, in, in terms of the whole picture of all the kiddos that you guys serve under special ed. You know, yes, that's a part of it, but there's all this huge other things that have to be done too, so.
And giving those students with significant behaviors, the skills they need to be able to access their learning is a really big responsibility by everyone.
It's important, and I just want to indicate for those who might try to pick up this budget and try to make sense of all the pluses and minuses as you go through it. It's, there's so many moving parts. It's hard to do individually, obviously, because there's so much detail into, you know, one of the biggest pieces of our budget. Every month with that, but, but it is all work that needs to be done. And, and it does make the difference because when we talk about how our schools are performing and includes all students. And these students need our help to get, to be as productive as they can be in our society. Important stuff.
I would just like to comment on something that this is a very difficult budget. There are a lot of moving parts and it is very difficult to put together. And I want to compliment Christine. She came to us, as all of you know, and hit the ground running. And it's not easy to put a budget together when you haven't done it in the prior year. So in order for her to pull all the pieces and look at all of the information and be able to put something together that is as clear as what she's presented to us tonight is, is, is very commendable. And the other thing that I want to mention, you know, we're all here. It's been a long day. We're kind of asleep a little bit, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact of the following. Christine just mentioned something about, you know, our special ed students. And you mentioned this eloquently, it covers a variety of individuals, a variety of needs, right? And you, and you mentioned successes, how our kids are succeeding, which I really love to hear. And then you mentioned how you compare how our kids are doing compared to other students who are, who are receiving service from the state that they're, that they're doing better. So we heard that tonight. We heard mid main technical center students of the smallest schools that sends students to the tech center. Yet we received, it sounded like a ton of metal. Yet we received, it sounded like a ton of medals, first, second, and third places at the tech center. And then last but not least, the sportsmanship banners, three of them in one season. I mean, folks, we ought to be leaving here waving flags and jumping up and down and saying, look at Winslow Public Schools, what a great place to sit for kids.
Presenters that come in from outside that are telling Chad on their way out the door how great the kids are and how respectful they were and how he doesn't see that all the time, so, yeah.
So one of the pieces I want to highlight is that you don't always measure success with a score, with a standardized score. Measure, measure success in many different ways. And we're hearing about all those ways throughout these presentations. And.
Look at the smile on that kid's face at a unified basketball game or unified hearing. You, you can't, if you haven't been, you should go.
And the support of the other students. That, those unified, I went to my, my daughter's volunteering for the unified basketball. You have to go to one of those games. The community just, it is so beautiful. And everyone showing up to support these kids. It is, I brought tissues and I needed them because it's really beautiful. And our kids that are helping out, ah, yeah, it's a special, it's very special.
And look at the smile on that kid's face at the store.
There is a real smile.
I know there is.
You know, they're just so proud.
Yeah. Thank you, that was, much job.
Thank you to everyone who helped.
Takes a team. Right. Next up is one that's far simpler, is the board and central office budget.
So beginning on, I guess the first thing that I would say is that there are some, there are some large numbers in this budget, because that's where your bond payments are budgeted for. I'll get to those in just a few moments, but I'd just like to work down through. The first thing that I want to bring to your attention in this budget are lines one, two, and three. These lines are a result of new legislation. This is a new cost to us. So Meg, when you said a few minutes ago, most of the, this is one of those costs that we have no control over.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah. So this is the main paid family medical leave program. The lines you see is where the money is being budgeted for the three buildings, our elementary school, our junior high school, and our high school. And they're being budgeted on a central office because this is an unemployment kind of piece. And it makes sense for us to put it here right now until we can figure out how best to, for our system to be able to calculate where it actually goes in the buildings. But we're able to track it here and that's why it's there. So essentially, we're required to collect one percent of all salaries to cover this program. The percent is split between the employee and the employer. And so we contribute a half a percent. The employee contributes a half a percent. So the amount that you see in there is a new cost for this coming year. And if you look at that amount and you look at this budget, that takes care of predominantly a large number of the increase of this particular budget. Now, here's the frustrating part about this. The rules for this program are still being developed. And there are a lot of unanswered questions, so you, you could ask me questions tonight about this. I may not be able to answer. I could tell you how paid family medical leave works currently because I'm the one that sits down and does it with everybody. But what this is going to do, the rules are being developed. It may not be me. It may be someone from the state. So our staff may never talk to somebody from central office again when something like this happens. They may be talking to somebody else. Who that's going to be, I don't know. So all of those things are being developed.
State has not decided if they're going to administer it or they're going to have a third party administrator, so.
Yeah.
It's not like the usual F M L A might be now.
And I think it removes the, the personal touch of somebody going out and being sick or hurt. You, you, you lose that personal touch because they're going to be talking to somebody they don't know. So also under the board of education, I want to jump down to lines thirty and thirty-one. Those are our insurance lines. Small increase in one of those, in the insurance student line. That's student insurance. If a student is entered at school, our policy covers, but the parent's policy doesn't cover. It's a, it's a secondary kind of policy for the most part. Line thirty-one is our liability policy. This is an umbrella policy for any staff legal liability and staff legal issues that may arise. These are usually big issues. When you gets, when you touch these lines, they're big issues, which is different than legal fees, which could be a fifteen minute conversation with Drummond Woodson on advice on a particular matter. Line thirty-three gets into dues and fees. There's not much of an increase there, but something that I do want to remind all of you of, and anyone who's listening, is that we do pay dues to the Canobic Alliance to the tune of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars to belong to that. However, in return for belonging to the Canobic Alliance and participating in the development of professional development activities for our staff, which includes custodians and other, 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 not just, not just, not just teachers, not just ed techs, but just everybody. Whatever the, whatever that professional development might be. Because we provide that and because the state sees that as a savings amongst the Canobic Alliance, we bring in sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars on our two seventy-nine, which is the revenue from the state for belonging and for participating. So it's a tremendous return for the work that, that is done for that. Line sixty-three, this is a support contract increase. It's a new software program called Frontline. Amanda has been doing the work for this from our office, working with the Waterville Business Office. And I've asked her to say a few words.
So Frontline is a software program that assists human resources in managing employee data and information. The first part that we're working on, that we're gonna roll out first, and then there's other steps to it, is the absence management, which is requesting and approving time off electronically. And then there'll be time management, which is online time sheets recorded by employees and approved by administrators electronically and so much more efficiently. And then Frontline will manage all of our substitute information, which will allow us to do away with our current program ready sub. So that will be a savings there. And then there'll be a place for online district documents, including payroll, insurance information, direct deposit information, and just a much more streamlined process for arguing and resource on this.
That's all cloud-based?
It's all, yeah, it's a software program, yeah.
I assume you've mentioned argumentation. So I assume Waterville is doing the same thing.
Yes.
And, yeah, and that's the one as well.
Okay. We got the notification this morning.
There you go. All right, we're good. I know that when we first did the original sub-program that we had, that was a nice leap forward. And this is another leap forward and.
Well, I think one of the things, whenever we think about this, I look at Erica. She's sitting back there smiling because she spends hours on, on time sheets. And we hope that this is going to streamline that process and remove a lot of the time that she's spending doing that, that work.
Now, what is the training and professional development looking like before this? Because people are going to have to be taught how to use the system, how to make edits to things. When, is that coming out of the next professional development day or the next? I think this is, go ahead.
So I don't think we've really decided on how exactly that's going to work. But the, the, the company Frontline is going to train some of the employees in the Waterville office, as well as myself, on how to train you. So I'm guessing it probably will be an in-service day this spring. But we're hoping to roll some stuff out starting March for that first piece of it, the absence management.
It appears to me that there's a lot of front-loading, a lot of work that needs to take place before this thing is rolled out. And I, and I think right now it's just alerting folks that this is coming. And it's, it is a way to save money because it's going to be incorporating in other programs.
Correct.
And efficiencies, so. But it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a slow rollout. It's not gonna happen. Line sixty-nine, that line is the admin business services line. These are the business functions that we share with Waterville and Bassifirl. This, of course, those of you who have been around for a while, was started when we were in A O S, an alternative organizational structure. There's a cost savings measure and it's still a savings for us to stay with this model. This accounts for personnel in the following areas, human resources, accounts payable, data management. The increase that you see in that line is a result of, again, wage increases, insurance costs, which may drop slightly because we, we are budgeted at the highest ten percent, hoping for a reduction. Waterville is doing the same thing since, since the business centers run out of Waterville. They have the same, the same potential for some savings there. So in, in some additional times, additional support in that particular office, because there is a tremendous amount of work that is being done there. And you have new initiatives coming at us all the time. For instance, this earned paid family medical leave and how to calculate and how to do that work. In Winslow, whenever we have an H R person, we speak with Melanie Drew. She's our person in that office. And so it's still a savings for us if we look at what is our cost if we have to have all of our own people. It's still, it's still a good deal.
And Melanie is great.
She does a great job. Lines seventy-three and seventy-five, you'll see an increase in our insurance property, which is to be expected, slight increase there. Lines seventy-seven and seventy-eight are some of the big expenses in this budget. These are your bond payments I referred to earlier. You'll see the principal and the interest payments in these lines. The big change is that you'll see in line seventy-seven, the principal payment went up twenty thousand dollars, as it would if it were your own home, right? And the, and that's on the junior high addition. And the interest payment went down twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. That's on the high school bond that you have, that you've had for quite a few years, resulting in a decrease of nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars in debt service. Now, big question is, people keep asking, when is that high school bond done? When is it going to be done? The high school bond is paid for in twenty-six, twenty-seven. That rolls off the books in twenty-six, twenty-seven. The junior high bond has many years to go, as you can well imagine. You know, the bond sheet goes out to twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, long after I will be gone. See the end of that. I'm going to turn the next part over to Cory, because he has a small maintenance portion of this in this particular.
When the maintenance in line seventy-nine, the T O D is water. After reviewing where we're currently at, and we're, we're going to be fine at the end of the year. It just made sense to increase that slightly to match where at the end of the year we're ready to one. Same thing with the sewer. We had to increase that a little bit, not anything dramatically. And then you'll see another change on line eighty-eight. We got our fuel bids back. So that, we will see the reflection of our fuel bids what we, uh, team that in at. So that is also reflected in this budget for the superintendent's office.
Thank you, Cory. The next section is your health services budget. This is a relatively small budget. Essentially, this health budget is for our nurses. We have three nurses in this budget. The increase is essentially wages and insurance costs again. Line one, I will bring to your attention, because that amount in that line is for the elementary school nurse salary and part of the junior high school nurse salary, because she does go over to the elementary school to provide additional support because of the numbers at the elementary school and the needs that they have. If you look at line sixteen, you see that's the remaining salary of the junior high nurse. I just wanted you to, just to point that out, that one looked pretty high, one looked quite a bit lower. That's why, it's because you've got one person's salary kind of in two places. Again, this is a really straightforward budget. There's a little bit of money for staff development, equipment, and supplies, but there's nothing in here that's, that's out of the, out of the ordinary for the nursing budget. If you don't have any questions on that, I'll move on to the E S O L budget. So on this particular budget, it's only two pages as well. Barely straightforward, but I think it's important just to go over a few things with you. In our current academic year, we have one teacher and one ed tech providing daily services for fourteen students receiving English language services. And we have two second, two students who are on the second year of monitor. Daily services include direct English language instruction delivered by the E S O L teacher and the academic language support in the classroom provided by the E S O L ed tech. In-class ed tech support is especially critical at the junior high and at the high school levels for students at the beginning level of language proficiency and their teachers. Students by grade level, in kindergarten, we have two. In second grade, we have one. Third grade, we have one. Fifth grade, we have one student. Sixth grade, we have one student. Seventh grade, we have one student. Eighth grade, we have two students. Ninth grade, we have two students. And then tenth grade, you have three students. We have monitored students both in seventh and eighth grades. If you look at how the students are scattered out, you can see it becomes a little bit of a challenge for the teacher and the ed tech to provide the services that they need. At home, our students and their families use Arabic, speak Arabic, it's French, Burundi, Lingala, Penobscot, Spanish, Tagalog.
So how many languages?
Six. Seven.
Seven languages.
There are no major changes in this budget from last year, except a change to salary and insurance costs. Okay. Moving along, next one is district certification budget. And that is a one-paid budget, small budgets. Although it's a small budget, it's a very important budget. This is one of those areas that superintendents get in trouble for because if you have people who aren't certified, not holding certification, you lose your certification and no longer are employed. So. It's, it's not an option. So this supports the work being done in each of the buildings to ensure that our staff hold a proper certifications for their positions. We have a governance board chair. And we have representatives in each of the buildings that our staff can reach out to with questions regarding their certifications and guidance on any kind of professional development plan that they need to follow in order to keep their certification or renew their certification. In addition, teachers are required to have a mentor. That a teacher's new to us or new are required to have a mentor. And a small stipend is paid to individuals who are willing to be mentored for these new teachers. And you see that stipend changes in, by lines over the years, depending on where the teacher's hired, which building they're in, which they're not. So in line one, line five, line nine are the costs of where those stipends are being paid for the mentors to work with the various new staff in the buildings. It's a pretty straightforward process. There are no questions. I'll move on to the alternative education budget. And if I mess this one up, Earl is right here. Earl is the director of the alternative education program in the Waterville area. So we have five slots for students in Winslow to participate in the Waterville education program. Program is located. Program is located in Waterville at Waterville High School. Program provides an option for those students who are motivated to earn their high school diploma and may have tried attending school but haven't had a good experience. There are many factors that contribute to this lack of success. Maybe class sizes were too big, there was not enough individual attention for the student. Maybe the mass of people moving about and the noise caused anxiety to flare. Students felt like they were maybe outcast or stigmatized in some way. Maybe there was a problem of bullying and social intimidation. There are a number of factors that play into why somebody might need to participate in an alternative education setting. Class sizes are smaller in these, in the alternative education setting, allowing students to receive more individual attention from their teachers. Learning is personalized with a personalized learning plan created to increase the student's success. Having had something to do with the alternative education program many years ago, I can tell you that, you know, first year of that program, we went after fifteen students who had been out of school for quite some time, and they were all ready to age out eighteen, nineteen years, and we were years old. And we were looking for kids who had experienced the real world and realized that the real world wasn't so great without an education. And they wanted to come back, and they were hungry. And those kids were extremely successful. The piece that we need to keep in mind about alternative education program is that not only are you providing them with the tools to be successful, you're providing them with those tools for the rest of their lives, and that's just crucial. Our cost, if you look at the cost, you might say, well, that's, that's, uh, that's, that looks like a pretty significant cost, but it really isn't. Our cost is configured by taking the total cost of the program and dividing it by the number of students who attend. The cost that you see primarily is for staff at the alternative school, there's not a whole lot of fluff in there, it's, it's for staff and people. The cost shown this evening could be reduced by the time we get to April, because embedded in that cost is the higher cost for insurance for each staff member. We hope that will come in lower even for Waterville, because it's the Waterville staff that's working with our kids. And if that's the case, that could drop, that could drop the cost. I'd also like to remind folks of this. Many of these students may not attend regular high school because they just don't fit in. They don't feel as though they fit in to a regular high school setting. That, that, that unique setting with individuals like Earl who can provide that, a different way of, of instructing, and a different, just that personal touch to say, hey, I come, I'm here, I'm mad. Those kids get that in this particular setting. If those kids don't attend, we don't receive about nine thousand dollars of revenue per child for those students. If they drop out, we don't receive that revenue. So if you take that nine thousand dollars times five, you know, you're looking at forty-five thousand that you, that we receive. So that offsets that amount for them to attend this program. Because if they weren't coming, we'd have forty-five thousand less. If they are coming, okay, it's, it's costing us that, but it's also gonna save a lot in the future as well as they move, as we move forward in, in, in society and in their lives. So it's really a great, it's still a great deal, because if you look at it from the standpoint of even seventy thousand dollars, we, we couldn't provide the programming that they receive at the alternative program for that, that would be one person. We, we can't possibly do that. So they're getting an outstanding program, kids are successful, they're graduating, they're going on to college, they're, they're doing, they're doing great things. And I went to the, when I went to the, your, your, um, end of the year program last year, you had some kids that were just shining and going on to great places, and I believe one or two of them were Winston students that did some really nice things.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple that I, and what's really cool is that they're in the community, so I get a chance to see them.
Yeah.
And that, that's awesome. And, uh, yeah, they're being pretty successful, you know, things that, certificates that they're earning and that they're using, that they're going to be able to use for the rest of their lives, so.
It took four more, that's it.
Off the momentum. Any questions on any of those? These will be straightforward. All right. Ian, you're on for adjustment, particularly on insurance, will affect all of those and all the preceding ones. When we find out that number and probably. So, all right, there's nothing else on the budget? Really, you'll move on? Next up is vote of appointments. Um, before we proceed with that, there is an addition to that. And there's no objection, we'd add Philip Kaiser, K Y S E R, to the list as a volunteer junior high school wrestling coach. Is all yet for additions? So is there interest in a motion to take them as a lot?
Some would.
Motion, do we have a second to take them as a lot?
Second.
All right, there you go. We have a second to take them with lot? Is there any discussion or objections? Anybody a chance to save a piece? All right. So that being the case, all in favor of approving a list of amended appointments as a lot? Are you unanimous on that? So next I'd be looking for a motion on the amended lot of appointments.
Sure, let's accept them all.
Okay.
Set that motion.
All right, well, you gotta have two. I have two votes on this. All right, um, do I have a second on that? Oh, I didn't catch Steve, all right, there you go. Uh, all right, if there's nothing else, all in favor of approving the lot of appointments. You're unanimous? Uh, resignations, uh, we have a few, there's one to be added to that, um, which Peter accepts these anyway, but, uh, Ben Clark is junior high school track assistant coach, would be an addition to that, those resignations. And, um.
Lisa Erickson, that's the end of the year.
That would be, yeah. My daughter still comes back to Caesar every now and then. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, her retirement will be a loss. She's earned it, so. Uh, all right, so given that, um, other business. Uh, we have a special budget meeting we'll be doing on March tenth. Um, that wasn't something we had originally in our sched, our schedule, but we will be doing that. And that is a Monday. Do we need to move that up timelines? Because that's the same night as the council meeting.
It's not our workshop with the council, ours is that Thursday.
No, but they have, they have a budget meeting then. All right, yeah, that wouldn't be to the point where they need a budget, okay. All right. Because we have our meeting on the thirteenth with them, all right, so. Very good, so we have that meeting on the tenth that we're adding.
Day after, daylight savings time?
We won't keep you long.
That's a special pain.
This should be a book one.
Given that we've already gone through the cost savings and such, I mean, I'm hoping that's not terribly long. So, all right.
So that's two weeks from now, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, um, all right, so given that, um, we do have an executive session, but before we get to that, for those that are tuned in and that are here, uh, since there won't be around here at after, our next regular meeting is on March twenty-fourth at six o'clock, right here. And if you're interested, we have a budget workshop with the council on the thirteenth of March at six o'clock.
And that's gonna be library?
That will be, uh, Winslow Public Library.
Yeah.
And if you can't attend, that should be streaming online as well, um, their normal.
What day was that, what day was that?
It's the thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
That's Thursday?
Thursday the thirteenth.
At one time.
Six o'clock, so. So I mean, we should have a call on there. So, um, very good, so, given all that, next up would be an executive session. Would Earl like the honors of making the motion on that? He's so good at this.
Motion to move into executive session, um, per one main revised statute annotated subsection four oh five six D, labor contract discussions, teachers' contract.
Have a motion? That was a motion, do we have a second to enter that executive session? All in favor of entering executive session? Adrian? All right. For those who are not involved, thank you. Cue, draw the show.